Will you gentlemen, please state your name and your affiliation with the project for the record.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Dell, members of the planning board. My name is Brian Quinn, I'm the attorney for the applicant.
Sony Lynn, project manager.
Sony Lynn. L Y double one. Project manager for New York City Football Club.
Okay, have you signed in there?
We will.
Please do so, okay. Well, go ahead, gentlemen, tell us what you're proposing.
Okay, you may recall some time ago, about a year ago, we were here before the planning board for New York City Football Club for approval for a training facility. New York City Football Club, as you may know, is a professional soccer team, they're in the MLS league. Almost, well, they did make the playoffs this year, but didn't go all the way, unfortunately, but we had full planning board approval, site plan approval, and it's actually in the course of being constructed right now. And there had been some informal discussions, as part of the original site plan, there were signs that were approved. There were two signs at the entrance, and there was a sign on the building itself. The building is on Old Orangeburg Road. You may recall it was part, it was the Stedj property, and New York City Football Club purchased it from Stedj. And there was a request for additional signage on the building. There actually will be a windscreen around the field, you know, there's a practice field there, it's a private facility for New York City Football Club. Team comes up here and practices. There's a windscreen that they would like to erect around what they call the pitch, the soccer field itself. There will be some signage on the interior of the sign, not on the exterior. There is an additional sign on the building itself, it should be depicted in the submissions that were made to you, and one other additional signage also on the building facing Old Orangeburg Road. Hopefully that is depicted in the material.
Okay, just one clarification.
Before you-
Could you define the difference between inside and outside as you're referring it here? Are you referring to it being contained within the boundaries of the field, or are you talking about inside of the building?
No, it's on the inside of the, there actually will be a-
The interior perimeter of the field?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you. So I believe these signs are all depicted in the material that's been presented to you. We didn't think it was a major thing. I actually wasn't involved in the initial application and submission to you. I became aware of it when, I guess, questions came up at project review. So, you know, I was asked to come in here, I spoke with Cheryl about it. You will see also that there is a letter from me in which, because of the, what I consider to be the minor nature of this, that there's a request to waive the requirement for Aqaboor, since it's a minor.
Okay, so just for clarification, the signs will only be visible from inside the playing field, is that what you're saying?
The windscreen, yes. On the building itself, there's also a new sign, there is a sign that's approved that faces Old Orangeburg Road.
Yes.
There is another small sign to the right of that, and then the other sign is on the building itself, but it faces the pitch, it doesn't face Old Orangeburg Road, and I don't think you could really see it from there.
Okay, so it's not a normal situation where your sign, there'll be sign area limits because of the way it's facing. So they are basically self-contained or not towards any of the areas, so they're just basically internal advertising rather than external, is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
Kind of signage branding, almost, you know? And again, the signs, I believe, are depicted in the material you have there.
Okay. Mr. Young.
New York City Football Club sign location plan. The PRC has no additional comments beyond the comments submitted by other agencies for this project. The letter from the applicant's attorney, Mr. Quinn, has part of discussion-
Do you want to have to read that?
It's just narrative, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
Letter from the Office of Building Zoning and Planning from Jane Slaven, December 20th, 2017, no further comments. From the Office, from Department of Environment Management and Engineering from Bruce Peters on December 15th, this department has no comment on this project. From the Rockland County Department of Planning, one recommends two modifications. Comments in the November 16th, 2017 letter from the Rockland County Department of Highways must be met. Number two, the town of Orange Town must be satisfied that all signage conforms to the town sign standards.
Okay, excuse me, you have no problems with either of those two?
No.
I didn't think so, go ahead. Next.
Rockland County Highway Department, November 16th, 2017, four comments, letters from-
You don't have any problems with those comments either, right?
Only number three, because it really is not going to be posted on a breakaway post.
Yeah, I think that's a very valid point. It's because these are obviously not near the playing field, right.
Nor are they on a post.
Right, thank you.
Rockland County Center for Environmental Health from Scott McCain on November 20th, 2017, we have received an application and sign location for the above referenced property. This office makes no comment on the application and no Rockland County Health Department approvals are required. Moving on, Rockland County Sewer Department, number two, two comments, they don't object to the planning board serving as lead agency, and secondly, they do not object to the plans as shown.
I think that's it.
We have one other letter from New York State Department of Transportation from Michael P Manning on December 4th, a short environmental assessment form along with other related documents for the subject proposal were received in this office on November 20th. Also received was a request from the planning board declaring itself as, to act as lead agency to conduct all necessary review under CEQA. The New York State Department of Transportation consents to the town of Orange Town planning board serving as lead agency for review of the reference proposal. As proposed, the project has minimal impact on state highway system, and the department has no additional comments.
Thank you, Mr. Young. Ms. Slaven, Ms. Magrino, do you have any comments about this?
No.
Okay, now, members of the board. Mr. Young.
I have no comments.
Okay, my comments have been made.
I have no comments whatsoever.
No comments, and I think we should do the bypass Aqaboor, give final approval tonight.
I agree with them.
I think there's a consensus on that. Does anybody in attendance wish to speak to this item? Hearing none and seeing none.
I make a motion to close the public session.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Session's closed. So, gentlemen.
Final subject to-
With conditions.
Okay.
I want to just re, do a motion to reaffirm the previously issued secret negative declaration.
Okay, I think that's obviously something we should do.
Motion to reaffirm previous secret declaration.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and the conditions, well, basically, there weren't any.
Motion to approve for final.
I'm sorry, motion to approve for-
I make a motion to approve for final with conditions.
Mr. Young, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the conditions, well, there weren't that many conditions. I think we could, we don't have to override that number three from the Highway Department.
Just eliminate that.
Right.
Right. Right, I think that's it.
Waiving the Aqaboor.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry, you're absolutely right. I've been on Aqaboor, and some of the other gentlemen here have been on Aqaboor, I think in this case, since it is internal, basically, as we described, I don't think it's necessary that we refer to that.
Correct.
Motion to waive Aqaboor.
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose? None. Okay.
Good luck, gentlemen. Thank you.
No, we didn't take the final vote. Oh. We did, all right, well, sorry. It's been a few years.
Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You want these? Time to you.
When is the, when are you going to be completed, Dave? Good luck. Yes, you will.
PB 17-62, Amanda Realty Site Plan. Amendments to final site plan approval with conditions, preliminary, pre-preliminary, preliminary, final review.
There's Bruce.
The address is 153 East Central Avenue, Pearl River, New York.
Good evening. Bruce.
I don't care. Wait till the office sees him sitting in this chair.
Yeah, I know.
We got the fire tonight, huh?
Yeah.
What are we on today? That one? Okay. I didn't realize you moved it up. I'm sitting home.
All right, gentlemen, you ready?
Yep.
Please state your name and affiliation with the project for the record.
Aiden McCormick, order of vendor realty.
Patrick White.
Okay, can you start your presentation, tell us what this is about, what you're here for tonight?
Was to amend the final site plan, the varied concrete pad to the rear and one side of the building that wasn't on the initial site plan.
Okay, and that's it?
Yeah.
Okay, does, Ms. Slaven, do you have any comments about this application?
Yes, there, there could be something viewed in here. The applicant received approvals, planning board 1158, final site plan approval, subject to conditions on December 14th, 2011. However, the final site plan was never stamped because the conditions were not met.
Okay, what conditions are we talking about, just to give us an idea?
No final drainage, and I went down on Aqaboor. Drainage calculations were not provided. I'll explain a little.
Please.
They also received ZBA approval. During the ZBA approval, the side yard setbacks were adjusted. The ZBA approval allowed for a seven-foot setback on the west side and a five-foot setback on the east side. The garage was built opposite. The five-foot setback is on the west side, and the seven-foot setback is on the east side. So I think what happened is they must have built to the plan that was originally submitted versus the one that was amended by the ZBA decision.
Okay.
That's what I can see from my investigation. Also, the Aqaboor drawing that was approved, that's not what was built there, and I explained that in number two, subset B. At the rear of the garage where the concrete pad was constructed, there was mature oak trees that were supposed to exist, to remain, and the dry well installed back there. The trees are gone, there's no inspection of the dry well or any underground drainage. And the abreviations that were existing to remain, a number of them have been removed, and some are actually dying. This is the file copy of the approved plan for Aqaboor. So these trees here, which is the north side of the property, which is behind the garage, do not exist, they're gone. A number of these along this way, the inspector was out there, they actually look like they're dying. That's the east side, the west side, only these exist, the ones highlighted in yellow are not there.
Okay, when was the date of the inspection, just for the reference?
Well, it was out there today, but I think it was out there-
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Like two weeks ago.
Just want to make sure it's not from four months ago, it's a current inspection.
When was the garage constructed?
Recently. So, none of the undergrounds were inspected, the garage was constructed and not inspected, and the siding and roofing does not match the Aqaboor group.
Is there anything else, or is that?
What we're going to need is, because they added concrete along the east side of the garage, as well as the north side, which is the rear, we're going to require that a New York State licensed engineer provide us with drainage calculations, saying that whatever was installed will contain, you know, zero net runoff.
And how many square feet is that, approximately? Do you have any general idea?
I think it was 365, eleven was submitted, I think it was 385, I have to look.
Somewhere in that area, thank you.
The as-built plan that was submitted does not show really any of the improvements other than the concrete area in the back, so none of the drainage is indicated on the plan, none of the landscaping that was eliminated is contained, so really, it's just an as-built for the garage location.
Okay, and so they never have final, I'm sorry, interrupt, they never really did have final approval on the drainage, is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Please continue, I'm sorry.
So we're asking for an as-built site plan, must show the catch space, drainage dry well, it obviously has to be signed off by an engineer. There is also condition number nine of the planning board 1158, the fire alarm system connected to Rockland County Board for Control must also be installed and inspected by the fire inspector, and hopefully that is completed. There are requirements for, again, through the previous planning board approval, Rockland County Highway Department, Health Department, compliance with mosquito code, all those permits have to be obtained and approved, they were never obtained.
Okay.
Based on recent letters submitted by those agencies.
Okay. Is that?
That's it.
That's fairly complete. Mr. Magrino, what are your comments on this, and what are your suggestions?
Well, I mean, it appears that the planning conditions of site plan approval and Aqaboor are near too, so it seems like they need initial plans, maybe need a true remediation plan.
I think they should come back, they should ask for continuance.
I agree.
Put back what are the plans that are approved by the town, these are recent from the board.
Yeah, well, we'll be there in one second, but I'm basically agreeing with the direction you're going. I just wanted legal clarification. So what you're saying, that this board really has no legal alternative at this point, other than to otherwise be violating years of precedent, than to have this be, let's say, continued if the applicant wants? Now, if they wanted a straight up and down vote, I think you have an indication of what may happen.
Well, there's really nothing to vote on tonight.
Right.
They don't have a CO in any of it.
Okay.
So you may want to hear from the applicant to explain why it happened, and, you know, how they plan to rectify it. As of now, they're not going to get a CO until rectified.
Okay, do you have any comments on that, before I let the other board members comment?
Yeah, it was my understanding when I got a permit, that we were good to build, and we had multiple inspections.
But we can double check.
I have, the permit is posted on the building, has been there since we started.
The permit was issued.
I understand.
In 2011?
No, I just received it probably six months ago.
He just requested it six months, wasn't that, the department waited that long to issue it?
Okay.
The truth of the matter is, though, the applicant did not meet their planning board conditions. The department did issue the permit in error, however, none of the other permits were obtained from any other agencies.
All right, so you had a permit to, you're saying you have a permit that allowed you to build a garage?
Correct, yes.
Why didn't you build it in the right place? I guess that's the question.
Well, I don't believe it's in the wrong place, I don't-
How do you not believe it's in the wrong place?
This is the first time I've heard it's in the wrong place.
Excuse me, Mr. Vaughn? Okay, sir, you've heard these concerns that we have here, and we're going to be, I'll be letting each of the members address you directly, but I just want to find out, you're saying, basically, you are, you feel that you're compliant at this time, is that what you're telling me?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Mr. Young, do you have any comments?
Are there any violations filed right now, or is this just?
No, there's no violations filed, but when, realized that this was in error, the DEEM looked at it and asked for the drainage to be shown on the plan, which is not shown.
That's-
And it does not conform to the zoning board approval that we have on record, I have a stamped approved plan.
Okay.
So, if anything, that has to be clarified by the ZBA as to what their decision was.
And whether or not they accept-
Are willing to accept where-
The as-built says they are now.
So you will have to go back to ZBA, is what you're saying?
And the color of the exterior and the roof is different than when Aqaboor approved.
Okay. So how did that happen?
Well, it's the same color as the house, the house is painted, this was-
But I get that, but how come it's, if the Aqaboor told you it's supposed to be a certain color, why isn't it that color?
I don't have any other answer for that, other than we kept it the same color as the house.
But why didn't you, why didn't you tell that to the Aqaboor, and they might have approved that color?
Okay, well, if-
I mean, did you go for the Aqaboor plan, or you inherited this plan? I mean, I don't get how this happens.
Well, I submitted revised drawings approximately seven months ago, and I got a call from the building department saying my permit was ready, and I could go ahead and build, and I had multiple inspections. You've done all the inspections, done the electrical inspection, all inspections were done down there. The only issue we had is I added the pad, and that's when the concrete pad on the back and the side, and that's when the inspector said you're going to need to redo your site plan to show, to show the concrete pad, because it wasn't on the original site plan. That's all I was told.
What happened to the oak trees?
You couldn't even build it where it was, and the oak trees are overhanging, were overhanging the building, so it wouldn't even be possible to build it.
Excuse me, that's why you come by, come back to the boards and say you have a hardship condition, rather than cutting them down, because, did you get an arborist to give you that opinion, or is that something you just knew instinctively because of your background in construction?
Yeah, I just, they were overhanging the property.
Okay, thank you.
Because you add to the concrete pad, and you cut down the trees, you're affecting the entire drainage system.
Right.
That's what we're getting at.
Okay, all right, I understand.
Are you done, sir?
I'm done.
Thank you. Mr. Vaughn, please continue.
So was he originally required to get drainage?
Yes, PBA 1158 was December 14th, 2011. Condition number three, drainage calculations prepared to seal by New York State License Protection on years shall be submitted to DEEM for approval, they never received that. Soil erosion sediment control plans and details shall be submitted to DEEM for approval, never received that.
So-
The Aqaboor decision, just so you're aware, called the hard, hardline siding in woodland green colored land, and yes, it's supposed to match the color of the existing house, but it's blue. And the trim was to be white, the trim is white, the roof was to be brown, the roof looks gray. The inspector was out there today. So-
So what happened between 2011 and now?
As I say, I submitted revised drawings.
I don't really care about the revised drawings.
Well, I don't understand.
But what took you, this was from 2011, you never followed through on it until you came in for a permit six months ago?
Correct.
What hap, I mean, it's 2017.
I understand, so I wasn't prepared to build it in 2011.
So you just submitted, why would you think you could, you could just submit plans and, well, having to come back to the board?
I submitted plans, so it would be my understanding, if there was something else required, it would have been asked for then.
Anything else, Mr. Vaughn?
No.
Thank you. Mr. Vaughn?
There's quite a few things that are missing, quite a few permits that are missing. I think the board kind of feels the same way, that you should ask for a continuance in order to meet all the patch requirements.
Okay.
I mean, that's up to you, that's strictly your decision to do. There are a lot of things that, on the original plans, that were asked of you and were not done, and I think that you have to work that out between yourself and the building department, and get all these things done.
Understood.
What is the garage being used for?
Car storage.
So that's why they require a fire alarm in the garage?
It's considered, it's commercial.
Because I know-
So Mike Betman required it, a letter to the planning board.
That garage that you built?
Okay, wait a minute, sorry. Mr. Vaughn, you finished?
I know one of the things that the director of the building department had said, you required to put a dry well in the back of the garage.
Which I did, which I did.
Okay, I think you-
And we're just asking again, and so does DEEM, that this needs to be shown, if you're providing an as-built plan, all of the site improvements-
They should be shown.
Especially for a commercial lot, need to be indicated.
They have to be shown.
This is really just the location plan for the garage.
Yes, the actual, the drawings submitted showed it.
So if an as-built plan should show all of the improvements, they will need clarification from the ZBA as to whether or not, if they, if the applicant disagrees with our interpretation of what we have as approved plans, then they can appeal to the ZBA for determination, and the color is different than when Aqaboor approved, so they would have to also go back to that.
Did you hear what she said?
Yeah.
I think you're looking at going back to all three boards, so, that's all I have.
Mr. Vaughn, thank you. Mr. Mendel?
I have several questions, starting with the, starting with the garage. I noticed that the two garage doors are different, one is quite larger, is that for construction equipment?
It was to allow us, no, it was to allow us park a truck. We have vintage cars, and one of the transporters lifts, the trailer is higher, and that was the reason the door was higher.
Okay, now, do you have a small storage area or a workroom, that you have a door going into the garage on the, on the west side? What's that area going to be used for?
The garage is just for storage of cars.
Well, what's that open space then? You have the first bay, you have, which is the large one for your truck?
Right.
You have the second bay, which is a regular, normal bay?
Yeah.
Then you have a door going into an area that's not for parking cars, what's that going to be used for?
I can still park there, I can get multiple cars in, the car can, we can get probably at least four cars in there.
When you said the trees were overhanging, why didn't you move the whole structure, come back and move the structure up further or closer to the house? Is there a reason for that?
There was no reason for it, no.
Okay. Now, the total area of, that was covered over, the impervious area, you have the garage, you have the new concrete walk in the back, concrete on the side, how much blacktop or tarmac was added in the front that used to be dirt? Because it seems like there was a large area in the front of the garage that was repaved.
The tarmac, it went all the way within five foot of the fence, so the tarmac was taken up in order to build the structure, it went all the way back within, right to the tree line, where the concrete is right now at the back. That was tarmac.
Okay. You know, I concur with the other people, you're going to have to come back, but if you come back, you got to, there's got to be some sort of trees, if you got to rip up that back, this is only my opinion, that back concrete, which is about six and a half feet approximately?
Correct.
That back concrete pad there, that to be removed, the stumps pulled up, and trees built, put in there for screening to the neighbor's property to the north.
Yeah, we don't have an issue putting in trees, that was the plan, was to replant it.
Okay, but you got to come back with a, with a plan, a landscape plan that shows us that.
Okay.
Along with, and when I went over there today, when I walked along the east side, where you have, you have a concrete walkway, I didn't notice any vegetation along there, screening with the Ackerman property.
Well, the fence is, should be another four feet or five feet out into Ackerman space, the fence is not in the correct place right now.
Well, that's got to be corrected on the map or something, someone's got to- Someone's gotta show that, that his fence is on your property, in other words.
Correct, yeah. By at least four feet.
We received a letter today from the neighbor Carl Ackerman asking that, that also be shown on the as-built.
Yeah, that letter should be noted as being included in the record.
Right. What is the reason for the concrete pad behind the garage?
Just so I could keep it clean at the back. There was a door at the back, so I didn't want walking out onto dirt.
Okay. Just all the things that have been mentioned previously, plus the plans that show, you know, updated with the site plan, I think that was one of the conditions too, on the December 8th, 2010. I don't know if the updated plan ever showed it, but they required a vicinity map. I don't know if the plans you have over there, Director, or, has a, a vicinity map on it?
Can I ask what, who the architect is on the plans we're looking at right now? Because I don't know if we're looking at the right plans.
This is the one that submitted, 121317?
We're not looking at architectural plans.
No.
Oh, okay.
Survey.
Drawn here?
Yeah, correct, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's on the location survey?
Okay.
Jane Slaven, it's like the initial site plan.
Oh, okay, yeah. I thought you were looking at architectural.
All right, I think they had, you know, that's just my opinion, I come back with everything, showing the whole...
That's fine.
Is, are you completed with your comments?
Yeah, especially the drainage, because the only drainage I saw there was a grating in the middle of the maccatum in front of the garage.
Yeah, it has a drywall in the back, and gutters are piped into the drywall.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. The chair basically concurs with everything that you've heard, and we are in an interesting situation here. It would probably behoove you to ask for a, formally request a continuation of this item, and then rectify all these questions as you need to with Ms. Slaven, and also probably Mr. Magrino, before we can take any action on this, sir.
Okay, so I'll ask for a continuance.
You were formally requesting a continuance at this time?
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have any final comments to make?
No, sir.
Okay. Hearing none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Following the established tradition of an expeditious meeting, I'll now call the next item, which is PB 17-63, Defiant Brewing Company Plan, Final Site Plan and Conditional Use Permit Review, 4-6 Dexter Park, Pearl River. Gentlemen, sign in and please state your name and affiliation on the project.
Neil Acer, owner of Defiant Brewing Company. Neil Acer. A-C-E-R.
Donald Brenner, I am the attorney for Defiant Brewery.
Okay, please tell us about the project.
Okay, this, this project has been around for several years, and I just want to give you a little history about it. Mr. Bertuzzi is the owner of the building. It is a condominium, and he's the owner of the building, known as 4-6 Dexter Plaza. Mr. Bertuzzi is the one that installed the bathrooms, which I believe the Jane had mentioned, that she wants to look into. My client had nothing to do with the bathrooms. Mr. Bertuzzi signed a lease with my client, indicating that he could use the back area for overflow and use of people that are using the fine brewery, where they buy his product and get some, some food of, of sort. It's not a full restaurant, it's not a full bar or anything of that sort, but it's just an overflow from the bar use. He signed the lease, and somewhere along the way, he was informed that he did not have the right to do it, because the zoning was an LI zoning, and for what he wanted to use it for, he could not get it under the present zoning. We then analyzed the entire situation, and we found that under the LI code, you could have what they call a cabaret license, so he then filed to use the back room under this LI code, using all the criteria of the LI zone. There was some question at that time as to the fire protection, since there was only one door in the front. Mr. Bertuzzi retained the services of a architect who ran the full study, and he produced it to the building department, showing that there was adequate fire coverage from the front and the back, and, and therefore, and also, there was adequate, I think you also mentioned there was adequate coverage for bathrooms, since these were new bathrooms and handicap bathrooms. We then went forward based on the fact that, based on, this was an internal subdivision that finally did get approved, there was years in the making of trying to get 4-6 approved for an internal subdivision. The internal subdivision was approved, of which he had an allocated area, but based on his allocated area and the present zoning, he was only allocated about four to six parking spaces in the overall picture. He needed much more. We went to the zoning board, and the zoning board understood that because of the time differential, his usage would be after hours, when most of the park was not available. The zoning board granted him the variance, because they felt that the, between the parking that was there and the parking on the outside streets, because that's a parking zone area of the town of Orange Town, there was adequate parking. So we did get the required variance for the parking. We are now returning here to try to get final approval, so he can use the back room for the overflow of his establishment, which has been there for several years.
Twelve years.
Twelve years. And really, we've, we've had no complaints outside of this one situation, where we found that he was using this room without this approval.
Is that anything else, sir?
That's pretty much it, right?
Yeah, that's pretty much it.
Okay. Mr. Young, could you read, please, just the first letter, the one from Ms. Slaven?
Sure. The Office of Building, Office of Building, Zoning and Planning, December 20th, 2017, from Jane Slaven, six comments. The applicant has expanded the existing condition use into existing storage space within the building. Number two, the commercial subdivision plan should be specific to the L4 location and indicate the tenant interior demising walls, main entrances and exits, and the allocated space for each tenant. Three, commercial subdivision table indicates tenant L4 as light industrial storage, however the conditional use for nightclub per table 3.11, column four, number nine, should be listed. Number four, commercial subdivision table should be listed, should list each occupant's actual use. Number five, comments of the July 26, 2017, Office of Zoning, Building and Planning still apply. Number six, applicants will need to provide calculations to demonstrate that the plumbing fixtures, as shown, meet New York State Code.
Okay. Go ahead, please, Mr. Brenner.
I have no problem with the first five, though I don't know if I can get the names of the tenants. That's really, he has no control on the names of the tenants that's in the building. As related to number six, that's Mr. Bertuzzi's application. My client has nothing to do with that bathroom.
Okay. Ms. Slaven, can I have any clarifications or any additional statements you wish to make about this application at this time?
Okay, when I began my review and I looked at the drawing called Commercial Subdivision 4-6 East Dexter Plaza condominium, all it does is highlight the location of the building. However, when you look at the Egress Plan, divided, which is EX1, in my understanding, again, this, history of this happened prior to me starting my position, they took over what was considered storage space within the building, and started using it as part of the bar. It falls under the definition of nightclub, which I have stated in my comments. So once the occupant load for a storage space per the New York State Building Code is very different than the occupant load required for a nightclub, or as Mr. Ferber said, cabaret, but it's a nightclub in our code. So the occupant load increases greatly, the amount of people that can be within that space. From the building code perspective, we don't care who built the bathrooms, they have to comply to the building code to support that occupant load. So that's why I requested that. If the bill, if the plumbing facilities do not support the increased occupant load, then they cannot increase the occupant load. That's the building, state building code. So not only do we have to deal with our zoning code, which is an expansion of a conditional use, which they did receive that approval from the zoning board, but then when it comes within our department, we have to enforce the building code. They are two separate entities, and they don't, they do not talk to each other. And it happens all the time. So we, as a building department and building inspectors, have to enforce the New York State Building Code. I need to know that those bathrooms will support the increased occupant load within that building. Now, this plan is actually a subdivision plan for this whole lot, which shows within the commercial subdivision table. The uses within this table were shown as part of the original subdivision, which I don't even know it was done, maybe it was Mr. Bertuzzi who did it. But it doesn't actually apply to this application. This application is for Lot 4 only. And it technically would be considered an interior subdivision. They're not increasing the footprint of the building, but they're taking over additional space within the building to increase their space. So that's an interior subdivision. So when I look at this plan, I'm looking at what is a subdivision of the entire site, not this one location. So an interior subdivision, we need to see the tenant demising walls to see how the space is divided up. That's why it's called the material subdivision. That's not demonstrated here. The Egress Plan, while helpful in meeting fire and building code, as far as Egress and life safety is concerned, does not relate back to the building as a whole. And yes, we have a right to ask that. What are these adjacent spaces? They say adjacent spaces, we don't know what they are. That can be a question to ask of the landlord.
What do you mean, we don't know what they are?
Well, we don't, as a building department, it's not our job to go out and find out who each tenant is necessarily. And that looking comes in with the subdivision plan.
But we know who the tenants are?
Yeah.
Because they have to come in for a...
But take a step back.
Right.
They're preparing drawings for submission for approval. They're doing the interior subdivision. They need to provide all the information as to what's happening in that interior subdivision on their plans. They haven't provided that information.
So if I may encapsulate what you said and kind of put it in this proverbial shorthand, you believe at this time that this is an incomplete submission? Am I correct, or am I wrong?
Well, what I believe is they've gone through, they've gotten all their approvals as required from the ZBA.
All right.
If the board sees fit to grant them, based on the conditions, and they can meet the conditions in my comments, I don't necessarily have an issue with that. But I wanted the board to understand that the drawing that they're looking at does not necessarily represent what they're asking for.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, I, I, we are gonna correct the drawings as the building department requires. We will definitely make sure Mr. Bertuzzi, who is a plumbing contractor, builds this in accordance with the code of the state of New York, and we cannot get a permit until the building department is satisfied.
Yes, that's true.
So really, what I would like to do is try to get my final, subject to these conditions, and we will straighten it out, because if we don't straighten it out, we will never get a permit.
Okay. Mr. Magrino, do you have any generic or general comments to make about this application?
Well, the July comments indicate that the tenant space designation should have been out there, so I'm not sure why it wasn't put back out there.
All right.
Yeah, that's...
The, the previous director comments from July 26, 2017, were pretty similar to mine.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Young, can you continue reading the documents?
From the Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, from Bruce Peters, December 15, 2017, this department has no further comment on this project. From the Rockland County Department of Planning, November 21, 2017, from Douglas Schutz, recommend the following modifications, he has three. The comments on the July 17 letter from Rockland County Department of Highways must be met. Number two, a review must be completed by the Rockland County Drainage Agency and any required permits obtained. Number three, a review shall be done by the New York State Department of Transportation and any required permits obtained.
Mr. Brenner, do you have any comments? Do you, you and Yapi have any comments?
We have not. If you continue on, you'll see Highway has reviewed it.
Okay, but do you have any comments on these particular...
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you, sir.
From Rockland County Highway Department, from Joseph Arena, December 6, 2017, two comments. Number one, based on the plans and information provided, the proposed action should have a de minimis impact on, upon the county highway system. We pose no objection to the plan as presented. Number two, since the proposed action involves internal space construction, a Rockland County Highway Department work permit will not be required for the proposed improvements. From Rockland County Environmental Center for Environmental Health, from Scott McCain, on November 13, we have received a commercial subdivision plan for the above referenced project prepared by Jay Greenwell, revised through June 23. This office makes no comment on the request for a conditional use permit. Based on the information provided, there are no Rockland County Department of Health approvals needed for this application. Rockland County Drainage Agency...
It may not be necessary for you to read the entire document here. Mr. Brenner, do you have any problems with this letter?
No, it says, however, permits not required on the second paragraph.
But that's what I, I'm just making sure. Next, Mr. Young.
Letter from Town of Orange Town Bureau of Fire Prevention, from Michael Bettman, with 11 comments.
All right, rather than reading them all, do you have any problem with any of those, Mr. Brenner?
No, no problem.
What about number nine?
Number nine, a signed and striped fire lane must be provided on railroad track side of the building, and in the rear of the building. Location must be approved by this office.
I don't have a hair...
I mean, I think it's a ridiculous comment, but that's just me.
They do it, they get approval.
Quiet, please. Gentlemen, hold on. Mr. Brenner?
What happens, placing it on is all right, but I don't know if I can get approval from anybody on the railroad, because these people are impossible.
All right, so you're saying you have trouble with that particular comment?
Yes. I will, we will attempt to do it, and, and we might do it, but I don't know if you can get something in writing from the railroad.
It just says on railroad track side of the bank, not on a railroad, probably just on that side.
Where, wherever it's within the confines of, on, probably, we will mark it.
It's already shown.
So we will mark it.
It's parking.
I think it's already...
It's shown.
It's already there.
There's no parking on the, along the building?
No, striked, well, the...
Oh, along the building, okay.
But he's saying...
No, Rob's right. He's saying along the building, striping on the, on the west side.
Has nothing to do with the railroad track, it's just, they're just using it as whatever.
Right. It's on, it's on the applicant's property.
And, and it will be not.
All right, so short answer, it's not a problem.
No.
Correct? Okay, Mr. Young, do you have any comments?
I do not, no.
Mr. Bond, do you have any comments?
No, as long as they're okay with the, you know, the access, the, or the, so they can exit the building safely in the event of fire, whatever, that's...
Has nothing to do with the railroad track. Correct. They're just using it as whatever.
Right. It's on, it's on the...
And it will be not.
All right, so short answer, it's not a problem.
No.
Correct? Okay. Mr. Young, do you have any comments?
I do not, no.
Mr. Bond, do you have any comments?
As long as they're okay with the, you know, the access, the, or the, so they can exit the building safely in the event of fire, that's, that's really the big concern with me as far as the way it's being used.
Thank you, Mr. Bond. Mr. Warren?
No, I have no comments. I think our, our, so we should answer all our questions.
Okay, we'll give Mr. Mandell a moment to get the plan ready.
Can you... Yes, a few comments. Going back to the fire lane, is parking along the railroad now? Are you going to be able to fit a fire lane in there without removing some of those...
There's not a fire lane along the building.
Building juts out. There's loading docks along the building. It's not a straight run along the building there.
We, we will, we will have to install the areas that the fire department does not want parking and we will put a fire lane. Whatever the fire department wants, that's what we're going to do.
Because you have an outdoor eating area that, or drinking area that takes it away from the building. You have a loading dock there. You have loading dock at the millwork next door. So it all juts out.
The loading dock that's there is not being used. It's not, it was for trains back in the day.
I'm talking about the business loading dock, the millwork.
Yeah, the white loading dock that's...
But it juts out from the building.
Well, it's sort of like the, more like the building juts in after the, after that.
Yeah, I know, it's not even along there.
Right.
I'd like, I'd like to say in the file, it should be shown in the other fire lane without the, if those spots have to be removed, because it narrows as you go along, if those spots have to be removed, then you have to get Petusi to recognize that the spots are going to be removed, or the tenants that have those spots.
I, I, I think we have to do what the fire inspector wants. I will, we will speak to Mr. Petusi and he'll have to require, this is a requirement of law. We're not going to go against what the fire inspector wants. And that's it. I don't know what else to say.
Okay, now, the option of removing, I'm sorry, the loading dock, that was my question, rather than just changing the parking spaces.
It's really not under our control. We don't rent that area.
Okay, thank you. I'm sorry. Please continue, Mr. Mandell.
But you have an outdoor drinking area that could be reduced in size to accommodate a fire lane?
If the inspector asks for it, we'll do it. But we got to, I think we have a little bit, I think we have a permit to use that outdoor area. I think we go back in the records, we have a permit to use it.
Yeah, well, the fire lane takes precedence over that.
Yes, it does, so.
Okay, now I'm looking at your previous submission, the plans that show the interior subdivision. And you show, what is the, what's the current occupancy of the establishment?
I believe 72, 74. I'm not, I don't have that memorized.
And the new beer garden in there with the stage, what's the...
Should be on the, on the drawing. I believe it's 278.
I don't see it on the, the original, this one here. Let's see if you have it somewhere here. So the restrooms.
Going here? Is that what he wants? I don't think, I don't think he was asking for that.
Yeah, I don't see any occupancy numbers.
Oh, well, if you look on the architect's plan, I think he does have them there.
Which one are you talking about? The...
What are you running the study?
Okay, I see it here. So existing seats in the bar are 64, standing space 49, so that's 113 spots. Total, okay, now the expanded area is going to be another 116, okay, plus expanded area 357. So we're talking about, about 286 people. Now I'm looking at the, the original drawing and it shows...
We have the bar area, the expanded area of number two and expanded area of number three.
Number three.
And it came out to total number of 286 people.
Eighty-six people.
That's correct.
Okay. Now I'm looking at the, it says persons, it's part of your thing, fire exit, the emergency exit in the rear. Says 30 persons egressing through here. And that's the one where you got to go down the hallway, down the stairs, around the corner, through the hallway to get out the back. And then from the front, it shows the egress of, trying to see the numbers here that go to the front. But I don't see 286 people exiting the way it's shown here. And that's, that's my main concern. Because there's the bottleneck in the back, if something happens in the front, it's a bottleneck in the back. So, see if I can find the number.
And if you look at weeds of egress sizing, which again, that is more...
Oh, yeah, I see it here.
Building Department and the, you know, Mr. Bettman's office, they do, it's in building code, it's broken down by inches per occupant.
Right.
So they're demonstrating that they, they can meet that.
Okay.
Even though the math doesn't seem to make sense.
Right.
Not all 286 people are going through the door at the same time.
Right. But I can, going down the stairs there, I can see people, a stampede falling on top of each other and that exit becomes, no, no.
Because you have two remote exits.
Yeah.
The load is split up.
Right.
All right, so they're demonstrating that.
That's as long as the two exits.
With first stair.
Right.
With per person for stairs and with per person for door and...
Yeah.
Mr. Bettman, I will make sure that they...
Yeah, no, I walked through it today and I wouldn't want to be in there in a, in an emergency. That's just my opinion on that.
They can demonstrate compliance with code.
Yeah.
They have to allow it to do it.
Oh.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah. And it is a sprinkler building, which is no...
Right.
Work line at the top.
Right, yeah, I know, it's, it's sprinkler. I read that Mr. Bettman's...
So they get some relief when something, it has a fire suppression system in it.
Yeah.
Code gives you a little bit of relief.
And building department is satisfied with the egress from the building, that it's ample?
As long as they demonstrate compliance with code, we will make sure.
Okay.
And Mr. Bettman has his list of places that he needs to.
All right.
And he will conduct an inspection prior to us being able to issue a C V O.
Okay. And just one last question. How are you going to control the occupancy next St. Patrick's Day? So it's within the legal limits? And not creating a dangerous condition?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to have somebody there to control the occupancy.
All right. Okay, thank you. No further comments.
We're going to have probably, probably have several, yeah.
Okay, hold on. Mr. Magrino, you have a comment? And by the way, Mr. Mandell, are you completed with your comments?
Yeah, completed at this time.
Thank you very much, sir.
I was just discussing with Ms. Slavin, the, you know, the issue of not showing the demising walls. I think it is actually shown on the egress analysis in the key plan. That really shows the, this commercial subdivision. So what I would suggest as a condition, if you were inclined to go with this tonight, because that, this egress plan does show basically the site, but it doesn't necessarily label everything going on. But the key plan, if you just make that a separate sheet, ask them to make that a separate sheet and...
Relate it to the site.
Obviously, it relates to the site. Make it a separate sheet and just label the separate areas. I mean, there currently are tenants, it's pretty much like the board does on other occasions. You know, you say this, as long as it's permitted use, you're saying, you know, section A is section A and when a tenant comes in, a tenant comes in. There happens to be a tenant there now, so if they can label that and identify it, that would be helpful. But they really have the work done because it's on the key plan. So all you got to do is run another sheet with the key plan and just add that little part to it and think then...
As it relates to the site.
Right, right.
I see you're calling for a separate sheet in the plan set, which has this clarification.
Well, again, Ms. Slavin indicated before, if the board was okay with what it has before it...
Assume, yes, I understand.
And what I'm saying is, the way to achieve that goal is, the board does have before it, even though it's, you know, about three inches, you know, three by three instead of the full plan.
No, it should be, I think it's full sheet.
Has the demising walls, has, you know, the layout that we're looking for. So if, as a condition of final, with, the sheriff will look at, and Jane will look at, that will lay everything out and again...
All right, give me a short, short description of what that separate sheet should have now.
Exactly what's on the key plan.
Which is...
In relationship to the site.
Which is show, it, it shows this area that we're talking about and one, two, three...
The adjacent spaces.
Yeah, the adjacent spaces.
All right, this area that you're talking about. Again, we're going to be keeping, excuse me, we're going to be keeping a record. So specifically, what is this referring to? Okay, as succinctly as possible. So when we do our decision and assuming everyone approves it, we'll be able to put it in there clearly. Because right now, it's a little nebulous.
Right, well, it's...
Yeah, so what I think would be the easiest thing to do is, we already have a site plan that shows commercial subdivision.
Right.
But I'd like to take this, have them take this plan...
Yes.
At this scale.
Yes.
And show this key plan or something similar where it is in this building.
What do you mean by this key plan? Please define it.
The key plan on B X one. It says key plan.
Okay, B X one?
Right. E X one, it says key plan on the...
Is that E or B?
We don't, we don't have it.
Yes, you do. Yes, you have it.
Is that an E or a B? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
E, E X one?
This plan, this plan.
Right.
Look at the...
So, so the...
You have this plan as part of your package.
Right.
In the key area is what I'm talking about.
What happens is, if you look at this plan separate from this plan, they don't relate at all.
Okay.
So, well, if they were coming in for just an internal subdivision, this information would be on this site plan.
Okay.
So that's all this came for, is the site plan is updated to show what the internal subdivision is.
Okay, you would like to see an updated, an update of the key plan to, to...
On the site plan.
It's not an updated key plan. Just take the key plan, make that the internal...
Put it on the site plan. Okay, take the key plan and make it a separate sheet in the site plan. Is that what we're saying?
Right.
Okay, now it's finally clear. Thank you very much. Now, does anybody in attendance wish to speak to this item? Hearing none and seeing none. Do the board members have any additional comments to make?
I'm making a motion to public session, please.
Okay, well, just before we do that, any questions for the applicants at all? No? Do the applicants have any final comments to make?
No, we just like to go forward.
Okay. Mr. Warren, I'm sorry, please proceed.
I'm making a motion to public session, please.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion, final with conditions.
Okay. Conditions being, well, wait, okay, go ahead, make the conditions.
Well, and, and I think the first thing is what Bob wants in respect to the plan, which I think...
Your verbiage is better.
I'll, I'll add it to, as I often do, I'll add it to the town board or something. Good. Or something.
Okay. All right, so let's go through the, there's no problem with all of the experts and consultants reports. Okay, is there any general discussion on this? Is everyone comfortable with this?
We have to add the conditions in for the office buildings, only planning. They have six commissions.
Right, that's what we said, all of that will be added in. I just did it in a shorter way, so that was it.
Sure.
Okay, because it was nothing really contentious. Okay, so are we okay with this, gentlemen?
I'm fine with it, yes.
Okay, so we make, make the vote?
We need a second.
We don't need, everything else has been done, correct?
Mr. Seeger's been done.
Mr. Young, seconds.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Last item on the agenda. P B 17 dash 64, Berksen subdivision plan, amendment to P B 16 05, preliminary subdivision and sequel review, 55, 56 Woods Road, Palisades, Palisades Historic District. Please state your names and affiliation with the project for the record and sign in.
Simon Berksen.
And I'm the owner of the property.
Jay Greenwell, Lance Savare.
Okay. Do you have any initial comments you wish to make?
Yes, thank you. This, this application received a preliminary approval for a three lot subdivision back in June, subject to conditions. And what we are here for tonight is an application to amend this for a four lot subdivision with the caveat that the fourth lot is going to be dedicated to the New York New Jersey Trail Conference. They had approached Simon, the owner, a little bit after we got the preliminary approval with the idea that they would like to improve the long path. And I could just give you a wallet sized version of this so you can go follow along. I'll share that one here. The area in green are the three lots that are proposed to be residential lots in the R 160 zone and they will be private road and we need to go to the zoning board and appeals to that parent. The second sheet shows the parcel that is proposed to be conveyed to the New York New Jersey Trail Conference as parkland. Their, their aim is to take as much of the trail off 9 W as possible. Right now, it runs along in front of LaMonte Doherty and along the east side of 9 W. And what they'd like to do is, with this piece, they can run the trail in one of those elevated walkways that goes above the wetlands, wherever there is wetlands or wherever it's crossed the stream, and wind their way through to the Palisades Park property behind the filling station that's on 9 W. This was their idea, they, they loved this idea and Simon is, has proposed to gratuitously convey this and hopefully the, the board and the town board would see fit to regard this as a suitable dedication of parkland so that he doesn't have to have the money in lieu of land issue and this will be the land in lieu of, the money in lieu of land.
Okay.
So the, again, there's, the subdivision had received preliminary approval and since that preliminary approval, we also addressed many of the comments by Bruce Peters's office, Department of Environmental Management. He wanted a lot of test pits dug over the route of the sewer line to make sure that it was going to be suitable soil. The test results were very good. There was a whole booklet that was prepared by Leonard Jackson Associates that was prepared and delivered. So we believe that with this amended four lot subdivision, we are ready to go to the zoning board of appeals for the variance for private road and then address all of the issues. We need to get a sewer main extension permit from the county, permission from the D O T to cross 9 W. And we need to go to the, we have a jurisdictional letter from the Corps, but we have to impact a small portion of wetlands for the sewer to run through in an easement.
Okay, so I think that it's safe to say, right now in this condition, about 80% of this or perhaps more of this area you're proposing to donate is wetland.
Yes, it is.
Just to state that for the record. It's nothing against wetlands, but I just wanted to make sure that that was abundantly clear. Okay, Mr., anything else that you would like to comment on this?
No, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Young, could you please read just Ms. Slavin's record, letter?
From the Office of Building Zoning and Planning, December 20, 2017, Jane, from Jane Slavin. The applicant owner is advised that any and all future development requires planning board review.
Okay. Ms. Slavin, do you have any other comments to make about this?
No, I think it's favorable application.
Thank you. Mr. Magrino? Mr. Magrino?
Yes, just in terms of the dedication of the land, obviously that's, you know, a good thing. The code indicates when you dedicate land, you know, it should be for the town, but obviously this wouldn't be for the town. But my suggestion would be that you can send the plan, as I mentioned, to the chair. We send it to Parks and Rec and the Parks Advisory Committee, just so that they have an idea that this is happening, that can kind of sign off. Because the planning board can't necessarily have to set aside land for recreation on the subdivision of this site. You know, but obviously, you know, it's a good thing, but it should, since he's going through the process of doing it, perhaps the boards and...
Might it make sense to keep it, let's say, in the ownership of the town and then allow the other group to do what they want?
Well...
And they could have like a side agreement? Or just, you know, because once it's gone, it'll be then forever theirs, and I think that's not bad, but I just want...
It will be.
To get your permission... Your feeling on that.
Yeah, I think it'll be a little more complicated to try to get it to dedicate it to the town rather than then get have... I think the board will speak to them about it.
Whichever way you want to do it, it's fine with us. I mean, the New York-New Jersey Trail Conference was very excited about being able to utilize this piece for the relocation of the Long Path. If it becomes an issue with the town, you know, then it could get mired down.
I'm wondering if it might be...
It's part of their path, so...
Right.
My suggestion would be to at least have Mr. Gordon weigh in on it and have, you know, the Parks...
Good, okay. I just wanted to bring that up at this time, rather than saying, oh, we just gave a piece of land to the organization.
Right, saying before it goes back to final, because it's going to come back to final. But again, the board... The planning board does have discretion to leave it as is.
Okay.
Accept it as is.
It's adjacent to Thomas State Park, correct?
Correct, yes.
Why won't it be easier just to donate it to Thomas State Park? And to, you know, put it in the deed...
Put it in the deed that it can never be sold, could only be used for, you know, recreation instead of going to the town.
Oh, that's right. Well, that's what I'm saying. It can't be done. It can't be left in that. I'm just saying, I think that the town recreation should weigh in on it. It's ultimately your decision, but I think we should just hear from them in that regard. But, no, I don't think the town ultimately should have it because of the location. It doesn't make sense for the town.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
It did submit a package in the package, a November 14 letter from the New York-New Jersey Trail Conference, wherein they indicated that they would like to acknowledge the proposed donation to New York-New Jersey Trail Conference, 501(c)(3) organization. The lot could be used by the Trail Conference to relocate a portion of the Long Path, an important trail that stretches 358 miles from the 175th Street subway station to the John Boyd Thatcher State Park near Albany. In time, the Trail Conference might transfer the lot to the adjacent park. That was their...
Okay, because my feeling, I think some of the other members here might have a similar concern. It's nice that there's a 501(c)(3), but they don't last forever, so we don't want to see that, you know, possibly being sold off at a later date and have it be in perpetuity in someone's hands, either the towns or the states. Not that it isn't a fine organization, but you just don't know.
I think the applicant's intent to donate, you know, for a park's land, I should... We should take that into consideration.
Absolutely.
Definitely go to the state, to Thomas State Park, because it's all parked there, and we know that somebody can't... Whatever. I mean, that's just my feeling.
Well, if...
I agree, sir.
As to if they put a note, not a bill, a lot to be dedicated, you know, and...
Well, you can work on that.
Right, I'll work on that. Anyway, we'll get a copy and get that filed.
All right. Okay, Mr. Young, can you continue reading the correspondence, sir?
From the Department of Environmental Management and Engineering, Bruce Peters. December 15, this department has no objection to the requested amendment. From Rockland County Department of Planning, December 19, 2017, from Douglas Shuts. Mr. Shuts has nine comments.
All right, does the applicant have problems with any of these nine comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Next one, Mr. Young.
Rockland County Highway Department, December 12, 2017, from Joseph Arena. Mr. Arena has two comments. Rockland County Highway Department has reviewed the information provided for the proposed site plan, and has determined that the proposed action would not be adverse to county roads in the area. Number two, due to the location of this parcel at Rockland County Highway Department work permit will not be required. Moving on to the Rockland County Center for Environmental Health, from Scott McCain. Mr. McCain has three comments... Four comments from his December 6 letter.
No objection.
I'd like to know how you're going to qualify number four. In the middle of the swamp, how are you going to have mosquito control? It's impossible.
Well, in all fairness, how are they going to verify whether or not it works if it's in the middle of the swamp?
Yeah, yeah.
Clients with the mosquito code, however, only deals with improvements such as drywells or catch bases. We can't de-mosquitoize the whole swamp.
Right. All right, so I think we could kind of let that comment go. Okay.
Moving on to Rockland County Drainage, December 12, email from Shajan...
Totakara.
Yeah. Dated December 12, to the Town of Orange Town Plan Board with copies to the ZBA and Building Department. This is in reference to the planning board referral for meeting December 20, 2017. Please note that the above referenced site is outside the jurisdiction of the drainage agency and has no further comments. Please further note that the Rockland County Drainage Agency does not object to the planning board assuming responsibility of lead agency for secret purposes in the above referenced matter.
Okay, thank you.
Rockland County Sewer District, from Joseph Laffeandra, December 13, 2017, two comments. Rockland County Sewer does not object to the planning board serving as lead agency. Number two, Rockland County Sewer Department does not object to the subdivision as shown. Last letter from U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, dated December 12, 2017, from Brendan Newell. I'll read the second paragraph. The New York District, U.S. Corps... Army Corps of Engineers would like to continue to be appraised of the project as an involved agency. Should be noted that the full environmental assessment form indicates that there are wetlands located on the parcel, and if the department... Development will involve work in waters of the United States, including the discharge of fill material into streams or wetlands, then the proposed activities may require a Department of the Army permit.
Okay, well, that pretty much summarizes what this is about. They're asking you to get in touch with them and do your due diligence. Do you have any problem with that?
No, we actually have had them on the site. They've confirmed the location of the boundary. We have a very small area of impact which would be restored after the sewer line is installed, but yes, we need to get their confirmation and approval.
Okay. Mr. Young, do you have any comments, sir?
No, sir.
Mr. Bond?
No.
Okay, Mr. Warren?
No, sir, and I want to thank you very much for your idea of donating a property.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mendel?
No comments, great project, thanks for donating.
And the chair concurs.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mendel. Okay, now, anybody in attendance, since we have an empty room, I assume we don't have anybody who wishes to speak to the item? So hearing none.
I'll make a motion in public session.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, gentlemen.
This is preliminary? This can't go to final? Or...
No, it's not advertised.
We need to go to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, we could... We've done it in the past, made it a condition. What? We can't now, it's not advertised.
Right, we can't, right. Okay, so we... Anyone wish to make a motion?
Motion, preliminary. Or secret?
Just reaffirm the previously issued secret termination negative.
Okay, so we do that first or...
Yes.
Okay, so...
I'll make the motion to reaffirm.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I made a motion.
Mr. Mendel, then.
It was a tie, actually. It goes to the runner.
Okay, next. So preliminary with conditions, who makes that?
I'll make a motion for preliminary conditions.
Okay, and the conditions are? About everything we said. I don't see if there's anything we have to add, except I think we could add, as some members have said, that we commend the applicant for their donation of the land, and we feel that this is a positive contribution to the community.
Can we put it in? Now, we can't make it a condition, but some thought, or if you can, if the property could go to Thomas State Park versus the town or to this other organization?
Well, I think between now and final, we can... And I was going to say, sending that letter. I mean, if you feel...
We can't make it a condition, but...
He's wishing to donate.
We can make a recommendation, yes.
Whatever makes the most sense.
If the board feels that way.
My suggestion would have been, it is going to be that we have a restrictive covenant filed that it will forever be, you know, parkland, whatever, you know, and that'll be filed before we...
Well, yeah, I'd just rather see it in the hands of the state or the town, because you just never know.
You get too many different organizations having their hands into it. That's when you have a problem.
I don't think the Trail Conference would have an objection if, as long as they had...
As long as they could use it.
Use it for their trail purpose.
Okay.
Well, they had said in...
They want to bring the hikers off of root.
But they would think in the future of donating it to the state. So let's see if we can do that now.
Okay, Mr. Warren, so then what you're saying is the planning board suggests that the land be conveyed to a state agency?
Right.
You suggested that the applicant could convey it to the state agency, to Thomas State Park.
Right, to Thomas State Park. Do you gentlemen have any problem with that recommendation?
Ma'am, could it also be and/or the town?
Hold on, please. Please ask, ask Mr. Magrino. Mr. Magrino...
I think we're... If we dedicate it to, for parkland, we'll work it out before we get to...
Okay, and in consult... In consultation with Mr. Magrino. Okay?
Yep.
All right, any... Okay, so we okay with that?
Yes.
Okay, so the motion and let's take the vote? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? No. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Have a great holiday.
Yes, you too.
You, too. Thank you.
Other business? Other business? Jane, do you have any comment on other business?
Looks like a nice project, right?
Joe, this one, right?
Four lots.
Gentlemen?
I'll give that back to you.
All right, so what do we have here?
We have...
One giant lot and four lots.
Yes, essentially, we have a four-lot subdivision, but they want to build what looks to be one structure on the two lots. It's referred to us because the properties extend out into the Hudson River, which goes back to the one that we talked about, the couple, you know, when I first began with the dock out into the water that's actually in town jurisdiction. Our code, check to our zoning code, 2.36 Hudson River, although not completely shown on the zoning map, the area of the Hudson River within the town shall be R-E.
It is distinct here.
So what happens is all the properties along the Hudson River, they might be in one of the hamlets, but once it hits the river, it's in the town of Orange Town.
Okay.
Under our zoning code. So it gets referred to us.
All right, do any of you gentlemen have any problem with this?
No.
Okay, can we do it simply that we have no comment, or do we have to take a formal vote?
It has to go to...
No, we have no comment.
And I'll pass it through.
All right, is that good enough for you gentlemen?
Yeah.
Okay, so we're saying collectively, now, we need to take a vote on that?
No.
Making no comment? I don't think we do.
No, you don't.
Okay, no comment. All right, anything else?
Minutes.
Minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second, with the changes that...
With the changes that Mr. Magrino made.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Any other motions?
I'll make a motion adjourned tonight's meeting.
I make a motion, everybody have a Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And happy holidays.
And happy holidays to everybody. Thank you very much.
And if you don't, tough.
Okay, everyone in favor?
Aye. And I'll see everybody next year in March. I'll be... I'll see you in April.